Before we begin the official meeting of the City of Stark City Commission, there will be a time of voluntary prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Those willing to do so are asked to stand and Commissioner Mortimer will give you the prayer.
Dear Lord, we thank you, God, for this day. God, we thank you for all of your wonderful blessings. God, we ask that you will be with us in this meeting. Help us, God, to make the best decisions that we can with the information that we're given that will benefit the best for our citizens. We ask that you will give everyone safe return to their final destinations once we leave this place tonight. And it is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We were wondering if you were noticing.
All right, as we call the meeting to order, are there any agenda changes, additions or deletions?
Mr. Mayor, we need to have approval of Christmas parade route.
Okay, where would you like to start?
We would put number eight B.
Eight B?
Eight B. We'll make it eight B.
On your city manager report.
All right. Any other changes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have an item on the consent agenda I'd like to have. Remove from the consent agenda and click under eight C.
Okay, and which?
Item on four E, resolution twenty-six dash twenty-nine, I'm sorry, twenty-six dash zero nine.
Okay, and we'll put four E and make it eight C.
Eight C.
Okay, any other changes? We have none. I will enter a motion to approve the agenda with changes.
So move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Milner. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Mortimer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four oh. For the record, Commissioner Overstreet does not hear this meeting. All right, at this time I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I've checked the bills and everything seems to be in order. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second. We have a motion and a second to change, or to approve the agenda. Has this been amended? All those in favor say aye.
I'll second it.
You didn't, when you pulled it. She made the motion. Mr. Nugent made the second. Sorry, I didn't stay there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four oh. All right, under old business, we have the charter review. Mr. Mullins?
Mr. Mayor, we've got ten applicants that's in your own packets. I believe the intention of the board has been to appoint five.
There was some discussion about having five.
So, decisions are yours to make, of course, whether you want to accept all of them, five of them, seven, whatever.
Mr. Nugent?
I may, I'd like to say that I think there's some, I know there's some ten exactly. There was obviously like nine or ten. But I would like to just go ahead and nominate all of them. That way we can at least have a form of five show up.
Okay, understood. Any further comments from the commissioner?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I, um, since Commissioner Overstreet, I know that we're trying to move on so that we can get started in December. But looking at all of the applications, we have several from District, who's District one?
I'm District one.
You're District one. Okay, we've got two from District one and one from District two. And Mr. Milner, you're District three?
Yes, ma'am.
You hit the jackpot with, what, three or four?
I think it's three now.
Three now? Three, yeah, three. And then, um, four from, three from District four and one from District five. You're District five, right? Um, I would very much be in favor of us staying with our original plan of having representation from each district, one from each district, because that way it's fair across the board. We've got somebody from every area of the city. And this way we're going to be a little overrepresented and underrepresented. That's just one.
Commissioner Milner, do you have any?
Well, I'm not strongly opposed to Commissioner Nugent's thoughts. I thought we initially agreed that five to seven would be good. And the thought that some will be absent or won't make up a meeting does in fact give credence to having perhaps at least seven as they are more than five. But I do agree with, to the extent that it's necessary, I agree with Commissioner Mortimer. Listen, if I didn't have anybody in my district, nobody would, I'm not going to say anything. But it just so happens that I see that I've got three.
Yeah. And last time, I, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but last time you didn't have any, but then you got three, so I think that's great. And I wouldn't be opposed to seven, but that's still an, that's an odd even number and will help facilitate a forum so that they can start meeting and getting on with the business.
What's your thinking?
Well, my thing is also is I'm looking at the names of people wanting to volunteer. And it's hard to get volunteers. We have trouble right now getting five for a zoning. And these people right now is wanting to do it, and all of them are really good candidates. Mr. Hatcher, several of them are really good people on there. And I think they do a great job. So I really don't want to cut any of them because we have, if we get five to show up, we're going to have five good ones. Get all nine of them, or ten of them are excellent candidates.
So with nine, what would the forum be?
Five.
Five. We would have to have five at all times. Sure would like to do it. Mr. Overstreet would, would say what she's saying here.
Well, we had a gentleman who was going to put in for it, and he, I didn't see him on the list, so he must have not mailed his, after he came up here, he didn't put his name back in. So that knocks you to have two.
Oh, that would make sense.
So he didn't do it.
So I believe I count nine.
Yeah.
Nine.
You had something to add.
Yeah, I had communicated with Commissioner Overstreet on it. She said that hers, all three were reasonable. So that was just her fault.
So, Commissioner Nugent, you make a good point. Commissioner Mortimer, you make a good point in equal representation and also with the odd number on there. And then if we did look at it as taking everybody, you know, and Commissioner Milner makes an excellent point too of everyone and getting volunteers and getting people to volunteer for something that's not compensated or anything else. Their compensation is they're taking an active, they're willing to take an active role in our city government and the long-term well-being of our town. In addition to that, you get nine people that apply out of over 5,000 people. All that being said, I think that with the aspects of what each one of you have brought forth, in addition of the willingness of these individuals willing to serve, it would be my recommendation that we move forward with all nine of those applicants. And then we don't get in a position of having to rate one or the other and exclude somebody from further wanting to volunteer in the future just because they say, hey, we were two out of nine and it got cut. So that would be my recommendation. And we do, we need to move forward with this. It needs to be done. There are some other things that need to be looked at, like election cycles when they occur. If we want to get higher voter turnout participation, we can potentially accomplish that in some of the charter reviews. And then just an overall update of language and how things play out. So it's my recommendation at this time that we move forward with the nine applicants that we have. And I'm willing to entertain a motion without a doubt.
I'm good with that. I'm good with that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Nugent to move forward with the nine applicants for the charter review. Do we have a second?
I'll second. As attorney, you don't see any problems with our process, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And obviously the attorney will be involved with this. And also Ms. Thompson, as she will be keeping up with all the records. Could you second that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have any public comment? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four oh. All right, old business is done.
I'd like to say thank you to the
Yes.
people that are here that came
Very much so.
and volunteering Brad and Ms. Bruce. Is there anyone else?
And Mr. Hunter?
And Mr. Hunter.
What we can talk about is setting the first date for the meeting, or I can link that up to you, Ms. Thompson, to establish that.
Sure, I will try to get, reach out to the applicants, make sure everybody's still on board and we get a date.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on. We don't have any emergency items. Next citizen request, number seven. City of Stark welcomes you to this meeting. This time was set aside for our citizens and general public to address the city commission. This is not a question or answer time. It is not a political forum, nor is it a time for personal accusations or derogatory remarks to or about city personnel. If you would like to address the commission, please complete a form, come to the podium when you are called, and speak into the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Please also limit your comments to not more than three minutes. Your participation is welcome. At this time I have two forms. If anybody needs to complete a form, they are in the lobby. First off, we have Mr. John Lefner from thirteen seventy-one Blanding Street.
First, I want to say thank you for letting me come up here and talk. We have a problem in my neighborhood, and I'm here to ask for help. We have followed the normal steps, called the police, and animal control, and nothing seems to get done. We have a house down here at twelve sixty-one Johns Drive. They have seven dogs in this house. It's a rental house. I happen to know the owner of the house. Unfortunately, he's someplace where we can't get a hold of. These dogs are aggressive. Three of them are very aggressive, and they get out all the time. We've called animal control. They come down, they talk to them, nothing happens. Today, while your town people were at my house doing some nice work cleaning out by a light pole in the back, they were bringing the pieces out, putting it out by the street. They were attacked today. They called Kathy, let her know that this was happening and that they had to stop what they were doing because of these aggressive dogs. I have women in my neighborhood that are in their seventies. Janice is one of them. Kathy's another one. And I would invite you to come down and speak to them so you can hear it from their own words.
Sir, please don't point it out. We're here to listen to you.
It's just a habit of mine.
It's a bad habit. I wish you wouldn't do that.
But anyway, that's where we are. We have the police down there. They don't do anything. I'm glad to see that you're here. There, I opened my phone. Excuse me. But this is what's happened in my neighborhood. And we're worried. Do we need to have the lady up the street had her child knocked down by one of these dogs? Or we need to wait till something happens to where one of these kids gets mauled? Or one of the elderly ladies to which find these dogs in their yard? So this is what we have. So I'm here to ask you for help. Because I don't seem to get them. We've gone down to talk to animal control, and it's, well, you know, we need pictures, we need this, we need that. I said, well, when they're attacking us, what am I going to grab my phone out of my pocket and try to take a picture of it while I'm trying to get away from this dog when it's trying to bite me? So this is where we are. So if you could help us, we'd appreciate it. I hope that you can maybe help us because the other officers that have come have done, they show up, they're very nice, don't get me wrong. But as far as us, we're scared. Okay? We're scared of these dogs. They were literally climbing out the window of this house today. And Mike and everybody else can witness it. So you can ask them. Other than that.
All right, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Sheriff, you're more than welcome to respond if you'd like to at this time, or we can discuss it later.
I'll get with him. I got with him last time. He was ragging on patrol. This time he'd have called. Maybe we could resolve it.
Okay, thank you. And I do understand, John, we talked about it a little bit before. You had spoke to me about it. Obviously, it's as interesting that it happens today, you know, with one of our employees and stuff like that. So with that being said, this is effectively under investigation and there's more work to be done. This is something that I'm sure between Mr. Mullins and myself and the sheriff, we can work on that for you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, Pam Whittle. I hope you don't have any Christmas dogs or any
No.
And we're on business.
No, it's informational. You'll notice my address, that's my daytime address, one hundred East Call Street. I constantly say where I live at the house. Anyway, I'm here. I've got two things to tell you about. First of all, it's Christmas parade. We have done a lot of due diligence, Chrissy and I, and with the sheriff's office and, I don't know your rank, but Kevin Neuwirth.
Captain.
Captain, thank you. I just called him Brad and Kevin. I'm sorry. But anyway, we talked to him, we've talked to different ones about changing the parade route. In the past, we've shut down half of three oh one, and everybody says, that's too scary. So what we're going to do, we're going to start where we always do, down by the hospital. And we are requesting assistance at the rear end of the parade to slow people down. And we'll go all the way to three oh one. We're going to block all of three oh one, go down three oh one, then go back up Washington and disassemble amongst the school parking lot. And this is somewhat of a trial because what we'd like to do in the future, once everything's finished, cleaned up, and all construction's gone, we would like to do it in reverse and come back to downtown and disassemble. But this year, that, we're just kind of, we're afraid to do that. So anyway, that's the plan. We are asking for you guys to approve that because we've got very few days to get it going. And we're also going to close the streets down, or we might do, at twelve noon on Saturday. Worked out real well, having the streets closed. Nobody was parked. Kids weren't running between cars and all this. But we are going to be having a car show. The ARC car show was rained out or something happened anyway. They're going to do a car show while the streets are closed. Those guys will come and jump in the parade, participate in that. They always have. We usually have a lot of the antique cars. And also at three o'clock, Santa Claus will be on steps of the chamber. We fixed it all up so it looks like a good photo op. Santa and Mr. Claus are going to be there. Santa and Mrs. Claus are going to be there until, from three to four thirty. And then they will go away so they can get in the parade. And as they're going through, it'll be like, bye, bye, see you on Christmas. So that's kind of how we have it planned out for that date. That is December thirteenth, second Saturday in December, as it always, always has been. And also I want to let you know on the twenty-ninth of November, we don't need any roads closed, we don't need anything, but we're going to be on sidewalks. That is shock small Saturday. It's also Florida, Florida State. But anyway, that brings a good crowd. So questions?
Yes, yeah, I'm waiting for the mayor's.
Mr. Nugent?
The tree, are you going to light it at the memorial site still? That's all we know?
I don't know because it does take several days to get it up. And with the construction, we really wouldn't want anybody running over that forty thousand mile tree.
They don't do any destruction in that, with the
Square, in square. Yeah, no, we were going to put it back over at Veterans Park where it was last year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, we will be doing that.
You didn't mention that part, so I didn't know if you were, what you're doing.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying that's, that would be the location for the tree. It works very well.
Friday evening?
I do, I don't plan an official.
I think we'll do a parade day. We have, we just passed, they've been putting it up and we can turn it off and light as we come through.
So that it's up and Yeah, just be lit for the parade and so forth. Then we're going to, Chrissy and I have plans to get with all the businesses down three oh one so we can carry what's on Call Street on down and encourage them to decorate for Christmas as well.
The last question was, did you, I don't remember if you did or not, ask us for candy components for candy or anything?
We will have candy whenever they come to see Santa Claus. It's a no candy parade.
So you don't need candy?
Candy and no candy.
No, no candy. It's a night parade.
No throwing of candy.
I don't throw it. I just rob with Gordon.
It's a no candy parade. I didn't call, I didn't call names.
I was messing with you, Gordon. That's all.
I didn't hear what y'all were talking. I'm sorry.
I'm not my candy moving on.
Okay, is that it? All good? Anyway, that, we have the petition. I'm sorry it was somewhat late, but we did kind of just get everybody on board with the parade route. So anyway.
So do we need to? I think we have that under eight.
I think you put it eight somewhere. Thank you. And come down from
Commissioner Milner had a question. Who filed for the permit to close three oh one, sheriff or the city?
Well, the normal process is once you guys approve it, then it goes to Terry Anderson, and then she sends it to the sheriff's office. These guys are aware of it. We've already been talking to them. And then they sign off of it. Then you guys send it to DOT or Terry.
We usually send it to the board too.
Yeah.
Yeah, to DOT. And we're also going to ask him, check the CSX.
Not that they follow the rules.
Well, I know, but at least if we know what time the last train's coming through, we know.
Follow up. The streets you want to close, you're asking to close at noon, it's Call Street or whatever.
Yes.
Like round three oh one.
No, 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 no. Not, that will be like five thirty. Is that about right, Kevin?
Yes, ma'am.
Five thirtyish to close this. Check it for y'all? Okay, about five thirty.
All right.
Before kickoff or lunch or whatever you call, parade start.
Six o'clock starts.
Six o'clock. Start will be good north of then. Okay, thank y'all. Appreciate you. Thanks, man.
On the parade route, yes. With Mr. Mullins.
All right, let's see. Let's go ahead and non, eight A audit presentation. Just want to go over this year's or last year's audit findings. So we are down to only two findings, so we're doing
I saw that.
Amen.
And they weren't major.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys. You said I go out front straight from the book, but we tried to do. Sorry about that. Well, so first of all, my name's Brad Upton from a partner of Fallon Jones. We are grateful for the opportunity to work with you all every year. James, Drew, and the rest of the team got us something we needed for them to get to us so that we could complete the audit and so we can present that to you. I'll kind of get to the PowerPoint here. So as a part of the audit report, the first pages three to six states that, it says the independent auditors report of the financial statements. And it states that we've audited the financial statements for the city as of the year in September thirty twenty twenty-four. Now, our audit is conducted in accordance with our generally accepted audit standards as well as governmental audit standards. And the goal of an audit is to obtain clean or unmodified opinion, which speaks to the reliability of the financial statements. If we give an unmodified opinion, we're saying that the information in the financial statements is reliable. And in our opinion, the financial statements did present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city. So we do believe that the information report is reliable. All right, so the next part of your report is going to be the management's discussion analysis. And this is the part of the report where you take the information and you give context to it. It's the management's opportunity to comment on that as the discussion analysis. Because it's based on information later on in the report, I would encourage you all to read that, but we will skip to the financial statement aspect. The city maintains, in governmental accounting, there's two primary type of funds we're going to be dealing with here. We have governmental funds and business type funds. The city maintains two governmental funds, which are your general fund, which is primarily funded by taxes and grants, and pays for general operations of the city, of the city, and the transportation trust fund. Governmental fund financial statements focus on current financial resources and use a modified pervasive accounting, which facilitates budgeting and accountability. And so here are some of the numbers, your balance sheet. Your balance sheet is what the city's general fund or the governmental funds, what they own, what they owe, and the net of those is just called your fund balance. And one of the things we like to look at as far as fund balances go is your unassigned fund balance. This is the portion of your fund balance that doesn't have any other claims on it and is available to be spent as you desire. What we like to look at, and I'm looking primarily in that general fund column right here, what we like to look at is if spending occurred in the same, in the same manner, the same amount in the year as it did in the prior year, how much of that unassigned, how long would it take for that unassigned fund balance to be depleted completely? The GFOA or the Governmental Financial Officers Association recommends that you have a minimum of two months. And as you can see, as of September thirty twenty twenty-four, your general fund had eleven point six months. So between eleven and twelve months, which is way above that minimum standard. And then this next slide, if you look at that, these are your fund balances. Again, you'll notice just kind of year-over-year tracking those fund balances. That's the net, your nest egg almost, that you have. And we're tracking the year-over-year amount graphically. Obviously, from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, it increased from about three point one million to a little over four million. And this is how it looks graphically right here. You're looking at that light blue graph right there. You see how that is trending up into the right, which is what you want to see. And the reason that it trends up into the right is what we call your statement of revenues and expenses and changes in fund balance. This is what you, what you earned and what you spent. And so again, I'm focused primarily on that general fund. General fund showed a net change in fund balance or increase in fund balance of about nine hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. You know, and a good portion of that is based on tax You know, and, and a good portion of that is, is, uh, based on, uh, on taxes. And then, uh, you did have about, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand or so, uh, in, uh, capital grants there, and then transfers in about a hundred thousand dollars. Your operating income, uh, was about nine hundred ninety five thousand, which is, uh, about twenty one percent in your general fund, uh, of the revenues. Means for every dollar you bring in, uh, twenty cents of that stays in the bank and is not spent. Alright, so in addition to your governmental funds, you have your proprietary funds, this is your utility, uh, system. So the, uh, city maintains one proprietary fund. Sorry, I keep points not talking my hands a little bit, that, that's my fault. Alright, well, we'll go, is there a way to fix this? No.
She got the magic touch.
She does, man. I'm gonna count it, not a football, but. Um, alright, so proprietary funds, these, again, are your, um, your utility system, uh, that's how you're doing there. This is, uh, this is focused more like in the business, uh, and, and you, you, you charge, uh, for a service and, and you spend out of those charges. And so, um, here we go. Again, this is your statement in that position, which again shows what you own, like the, your current assets, like your cash and what have you. Your assets were about fifty five million, um, and then what, what, what you owe to others, your liabilities were about eighteen million, and then the net of those came as thirty seven million. And a good portion of that, uh, is, is investment in capital assets, as you'll see of our, and, um. And you'll see, uh, again, we, we looked at, uh, we talked about that unrestricted net position without any other claims on it, we're saying, okay, we want, we wanna see at least that two months. Again, if, if spending remained the same, you would actually have about four and a half months, uh, which is, is good. The reason, so, so here we look at, uh, what you earn, what you spend there. Uh, operationally, uh, you lost about ten hundred ninety five thousand. A good portion of this is because of depreciation, so it's a non-cash expense, and that's why you look down where it says operating cash flow. Uh, operating cash flow is how much money you, you would have, uh, would, how much cash you actually increased. And so, uh, because, so you actually increased cash operation by about one point five million, one point six million actually. So you know, you showed an operational loss of ten hundred ninety five thousand, cash actually went up one point six million because of depreciation. Again, this is, uh, just a chart of your unit positions, and you see year-over-year what, uh, what's happened here, and it seems like that's, uh, trending upward. You know, you get, you, last year was twenty seven million, this year is thirty seven million. Uh, and again, the, the reason for that is, um, is up here, capital grants is a, is a good portion of the reason for that. And this is just a, a graphic of that. Okay, uh, pension funds, they, they, these are, um, you have the, a net pension liability of about four and a half million. You know, you have your, your general and fire and police pension funds, uh, for your governmental activities, which is more in your, your general fund, um, or your, your government. Uh, there's about two point eight million of that non-net pension liability, and then your business type efforts is about one point seven million. And then you see, uh, this is actually early determined, so, uh, so a lot of this is, is controlled primarily by, you know, investments, how markets are doing and everything of that. And how much you, you'll need to pay to be able to fund that over the court, the life of that. So it's, uh, it, it can swing wildly with, uh, how well, uh, the economy's doing. And, and again, here's just kind of a, a chart, your, your general fund is, uh, the orange one. You just kinda see what your, uh, pension liability is and goes up and down based on markets. And they all trend in the same general direction because they're all in the same market. Um, in addition to, uh, to looking at the financial statements, we, we also, uh, we, we wanna look at, uh, compliance with, uh, with how federal programs, uh, ask you guys to just spend the money that you receive from them. And so, this year, you, uh, you spent, uh, federal awards, uh, about twelve point, uh, seven million. And then, uh, state financial assistance, you spent another almost, uh, two point nine million there. Both these, uh, triggered what we call a single audit, which again is, is, is a decreased, uh, scrutiny on, on compliance with what these programs are saying you should be spending the money on and how you should be spending, uh, sending that money. And then if you look at the bottom, so based on the results of our procedures, uh, in our opinion, the city complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements of the major programs. And we, we can get them down in a second. Other reports that are in there, you have an independent accountants examination report. Uh, this, this basically talks about how the city was complying with, uh, statutes regarding investments of public funds. Then you have the government auditing, uh, standard report. In addition to, uh, to looking at financial statements and, and government, uh, and spending of, uh, federal and state funds, we also look at internal controls, uh, to, to see if there were any, uh, findings. And then we, we, we had a couple, uh, but like you said, that they were, um, they weren't major in, um, in nature, and we'll talk about those in a second. And then, uh, and then here again, your, your single audit requirements, and I, I've discussed this already. Your major programs were, uh, your, your grant loan funding for your wastewater treatment plant, for, and they came from federal. And then also, uh, you, you still have some of that, uh, coronavirus money that, uh, left over that, that came with the, um, with that grant. Uh, and then for your state project, you have a grant loan funding for, uh, the wastewater collection system as well. As far as findings recommendations, this year we had two findings, there was one prior year, but three two years ago, and we have zero recommendations in addition to, to those findings. And so, uh, the findings, um, that we had. Let me see, I'll read the actual report. First, uh, deals with the, uh, preparation of what's called a SIF, that's a statement of expenditures of, uh, federal awards. And then, of course, the, the state financial assistance that also goes on there. Uh, we looked in that, uh, and there were some errors in, uh, in the preparation of that. And so, uh, the, the issue with that is that, uh, it, it, it can, it can dictate which, uh, programs we determine are the major programs. And we try to determine what our, uh, federal, um, single audit or state single audit, uh, would be. And, um, and so, and so our recommendation there would be to assign a dedicated grant manager, uh, to, to oversee that, uh, and, and work on, or not oversee that, but to, to work on that. And then to put that, that, that SIF as a work and to work closely with, uh, with the finance team in, in doing so. And, and then, once that's completed, have some sort of formal process review. The, the other finding deals with, uh, we found, or we were able to, we identified in, in our, uh, testing, that there was expanded travel, uh, reimbursement, including spouses, uh, for staff. Did not have proper approval, uh, which, um, leaves the city open to the misuse of public funds. And so, um, so we, we would recommend there, uh, that there be a, um, a, a, a stronger process of, um, of looking over that. And so that would be, that's it. If you guys have any questions, please say that.
Question? I, I do, I have, um.
Yes ma'am.
Actually, I guess this is an inquiry, my question on page fourteen, were there two categories for the police on the pension fund?
You said page fourteen?
Page fourteen, yeah. You got general, fire, police, police.
Is that, um, this right here? Oh, yes, yeah, okay, sorry, I'm looking in the report, I apologize. Unbar those readers, be helpful.
There's your readers.
Sorry, you know, that, that, that's a, that's a, that should've said so.
Oh, okay, okay.
That, that's a total of all three, yeah, I apologize.
Okay, alright, thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah, didn't make sense at first.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't have made sense, so, sorry about that.
Anybody else?
No, I think the first finding is, he took care of that, but, uh, you, Drew, you mentioned we've.
Yes, sir, we addressed it. And then, yes, sir, that, that has been addressed.
Thank you.
Good job, Brad. We need to vote to accept or reject. Yes ma'am?
I, I mean, I didn't hear what Mr. Mullins.
About addressing the finding.
The, the two, the two.
Yeah, for the process of the policy.
Okay.
It's going to be updated.
Well, we've already, we already have systems in that we're gonna.
So.
Be changing or.
The warning under the grant process.
Yeah, that is, that part is being taken care of. The other, we're gonna have to come back with an actual policy for you all to pass.
Okay.
It's more rigorous than that, but, but say, uh, there's about the approval processes, specific to the city, third myself, and measures.
Okay.
So, we'll be coming back.
And we're in the works today, yeah. Okay, yeah.
Both are on the pass.
I love it, great, great.
So I will entertain a motion to accept the report.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the, um, financial statement report that we just received from the officers.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second document, Mr. Milner, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for a. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you. Absolutely, yes.
Our staff has worked diligently on that, um, in prior years, we've had multiple findings, and it's been a continual work in process. Um, just from the efforts of the staff upgrades to, um, what we're using for accounting purposes. And just, uh, Mr. Mullins and now Ms. Thompson saying on top of it.
Definitely is James, I, I will say, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, the finance department.
That's included in the staff, but yeah, we need to say his name.
Rocks what they do, for sure.
Mr. Mullins?
Yeah, let's move on to eight B, the parade route, I've all heard from Ms. Will on the, uh, proposed parade route, we also got it in front of you, uh, if you all want to go ahead and approve that.
Alright, at the time I entertain a motion to approve the parade route for December thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
I would make the motion as presented by Ms. Will and retoo by the sheriff's office.
Alright, we have a motion by, Mr. Milner, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Nugent.
He beat you to it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Second by, Commissioner Nugent, any further discussion? Any public input? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for a.
The next item, I'd like to bring, uh, Mr. Campbell up. Uh, I mentioned him last month meeting, the first month, I'm, I've been doing this on, I'm gonna give a small report to you all, so, hand it over to him.
The beginning, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, um, short and sweet, just the numbers for our department for the previous month. Residential permits issued were seventeen, commercial permits issued were two, we had zero zoning applications for last month. Three new contractor registrations, we handled fifty five inspections. The revenue through our department was three thousand one hundred thirty eight dollars and nine cents. We opened five new code cases, um, closed ten old code cases, and we had one commercial lot demoed on Temple Avenue.
Temple Avenue, um, both of them.
You met them.
You met them, Rockland?
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed it.
I have not. Been there so long, you can buy it for. Okay. You guys have any question, any further from Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Lance.
Thanks, Lance, this is very helpful, thank you.
Any problems? I do wanna add that, Mr. Campbell, wasn't it you and Nick, both of you recently got your R Inspector's certification?
Uh, yes, we did.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
No, easy.
Thank you for putting in that hard work.
Thanks, sir.
How long did it take?
A lifetime.
A lifetime? Over now, did you got it?
Realistically, the class is one week per five classes, so five weeks that stretch out over a handful of months. For a one-hour test, and then you got it.
Cool.
Thank you, sir, very good.
Thank you.
Alright.
Next up, I see Justin, I remember I was smoky on here, so, Justin, do you have anything you wanted to, to mention of the Route sixteen project or anything like that? What a three.
Always happy to have an opportunity to direct the commission.
I clearly buy that, but.
Yeah, I know it.
You, you recognize me? You've been hanging out with Drew too long.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to come up and talk. The drinking water project is designed, uh, it's ready for, uh, DEP review this month. Uh, so that's your upgrades to your water plants, uh, the line extension out to the bypass, the water tower, uh, the loop on Market Road and the water meter. So that's what DEP for this month for approval on the design documents. Uh, once they approve, uh, we'll be ready to move into the bidding phase or construction phase of that work. Uh, in parallel to that, I believe there are a couple items on agenda, uh, today for the sewer extension. Uh, we met with the county, uh, last month and, you know, expressed that we're, we're all systems go and moving forward and shared commitment to getting utilities to the bypass, water and sewer of sixteen. Uh, so happy to hear that, that that's moving forward on, on our end here. Our plan is to expedite the, the design of the northern section, which is kinda that, you know, well done up to, to the bypass. And then work on the southern section in parallel to the first phase of construction, which would be water and the, the upland section of the sewer. Uh, the downstream section of the sewer design is a little more complicated, it's got a couple of DOT crossings and a railroad crossing as well. Uh, Orange Street as well, it's a little tighter corridor that requires, you know, a full survey. Talked to Drew about, you know, using the last survey that was done on Orange Street, because the city did some pretty substantial, like, utility improvements, roadway improvements there, so not a whole lot has changed. So gonna try to leverage a lot of that existing information and then expedite the design process on the lower side. But we still have some, you know, challenges with respect to, you know, DOT crossings and, and railroad that we're gonna have to overcome. And so, a lot, more so just permitting stuff that's kinda out of our control of, of wait times. But as far as expediting that, we do understand the importance and the commitment that the city has with the county to get utilities out there. Uh, water would be there first, and then we'll be waiting on that, that sewer section of the downstream. But hopeful that things come together real quick, and, uh, I'll be here to, to provide you regular updates as, as well as we promised that to, to the county as well, uh, just to, you know, continue with that shared partnership, so.
And I, I just, I just need to reiterate just a couple things on that particular point. The overall plan is, as you all know, not necessarily changed, um, I'm sure you all might have seen the newspaper article with the, with county discussions. The overall picture has not changed, in fact, we've actually saved money by going down Orange Street rather than circling down, which, you know, what was it, three million dollars?
Yeah.
Which saves, you know, it's a lot of money to save, kind of simplify the whole process. The second item was, we are not using county funds to repair our own infrastructure, this is for design and construction, um, so that's not what we're using the money for. I just wanna be sure that.
No, thank you for clarifying that misconception, and I appreciate you, um, and you put the time in to go to the commission, county commission and report to them. That way, we just, we wanna make sure everybody stays on the same page and we have, you know, clear lines of communication.
Absolutely, I think it'd be good to, you know, get, get with them regularly, whether it's quarterly, you know, just make sure they, they have what they need as well.
Yes, sir, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, any other questions for me?
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, just, just a little quick thing about the, uh, some FMPA news. At the last board meeting, we had a discussion on the excess power that FMPA currently has. And the agency is at a little bit of a crossroads on what do we do with that excess power.
Right.
The opportunity exists to potentially increase the ARP, which is what we're members of, the thirteen overall members, which those thirteen members receive all the power from FMPA. And we've got somewhere like Gainesville or, um, you know, Tallahassee, some of these other places, they actually have some of their own generation plans, so they buy it off the market as well. So the question came down to, do we sell that excess out of the market for a large, short-term gain? Or do we actually go for a more long-term investment and welcome a couple entities into the ARP? So those are just the beginning discussions, we're gonna go more strategic planning than was in the upcoming board meetings. Looking to work out those technical details of how's this actually gonna work, you know? We all have money in, you know, over the last twenty years, we have a lot of money in, in at FMPA and we're part owners, right? So somebody just can't come in and, you know, just for free, essentially. So those are just some ongoing discussions, that's, that's happening now at FMPA.
Alright, any things for Mr. Mullins?
So, uh, this, this is for, for clarity, so the ARP, you're saying that is the acronym for the R requirements, right?
Correct, yes.
That, okay, so how, how many years do we have left on that?
Uh, we actually just rescinded that, uh, the letter that was sent in two thousand.
We did?
Do you remember when that was sent?
Yeah, seven to eighteen.
Yeah, somewhere along there, yeah. Uh, it was originally supposed to be up in twenty thirty-two. Uh, that would've been, that's when all the debt is paid off.
Right.
Because we, we are paying.
Right, yeah.
A hundred dollars, yeah, so, uh, that's when all the debt would be paid off. And that, back in twenty twenty-two, the commission voted to go ahead and rescind that letter, so we are in there, you know.
Until, until we decide, okay.
I, I need to be more specific, so there's actual paperwork with, there was, there was some paperwork that needed to be done.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll get that to you.
And, and the balance of what we.
Alright, we good? City clerk report.
Oh, wait, 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 we had, I put that resolution on under.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
City, MOU. City, MOU.
It was eight, yeah, that MOU. So what I wanted to bring up is the fact that this Bradford Sports United that we are obviously going to become a part of, we don't have, we don't have representation from this board on that board. We have representation of the city. Kathy is representing the city, but we don't have a commissioner. And in my opinion, I think we need to have an elected official from this board on that board because the county has an elected official on that board. And I would like to, like to recommend either Commissioner Nugent or Commissioner Milner to serve in that capacity. Because if you're remembering the initial discussion with Commissioner Reddick, Commissioner at that time, then Commissioner Roberts was actively involved in that. And so I think that, you know, it's best, it's in our best interest to have an elected official on that board. So I'd like to ask, oh, mayor, one of you, if you'd be willing to serve. I don't think it would require much travel. Don't know what their meeting schedules. Kathy, what do y'all meet, when do y'all meet? Have y'all decided when you're going to meet?
The Nixon's on the twelfth at eight-thirty.
Okay.
So, Mike, we have some of the appointments and the board appointments and stuff like that, which is decided usually by the mayor, like we're voting on some of those. This one, I made the recommendation initially to Ms. Kathy due to her sports background and because to have somebody basically associated with the city, you know, in there. With that being said, this particular organization is set up to be a standalone.
Right.
Five-on-one C-three.
Right.
Which is, you know, when we get into some of these others, I know they're not governmental boards and stuff like that, but this is not something, in my opinion, you know, going forward. And I would think the county may have the same vision. It's kind of by proxy, Mr. Reddick kind of ended up in that position to an effect because between him and the former clerk and Mr. Roberts, the idea got hatched out, so it just kind of fell in their lap. But as we move on and this organization develops, it's going to be standalone by itself. Those board members will come and go as they're determined by those other members as we go forward. That's my thought process on it. And long-term, I don't foresee us needing to have a seat at their table and everything because what we've decided.
But it's not their table, it's our table as well.
It is kind of right this second how it kind of has started out. But going forward, it's going to be a donation from the city. As is, it's going to be a donation from the county and the TDC. So to effectively demand, and just hear me out, that we have a seat at their table because we make a donation, it gets hard to keep those lines from being blurred. And people with the effect say, okay, well, because they're the city, they're on the board, they're donating the money, they can affect how we operate and how we do things in the future. So that was my thought process in that position, and that's why I didn't insert myself in that. Because I'm relying on this organization being autonomous, they're being a standalone organization because they're going to help our community and build our community. Us as the city, it's an investment for us to a degree in our citizens and in our youth to put that money in because otherwise, as the city, we may actually have to take on that position as we have in times past, right? We ran the recreational organization and things like that. So I don't, personally, I don't want to see us heavily invested from a city position in a governmental entity and governing that organization as it moves forward.
I agree with that. I agree, but my concern is that, you know, we, when we, there's a, there's a member of the TDC on that board. There's a county commissioner on that board, and we have a line staff on that board. And I think, in my opinion, looking at it, we need to have someone from this board, this legislative board, that will have the same authority as those other, as those higher level members of the TDC, whatever that person is, and the county. That's just, I just think that we owe it to ourselves to have that.
And I just, I didn't look at it as a rank and file or pulling weight kind of position from that. Because, I mean, it's my decision to do that.
Well, yeah, and, you know, no disrespect to you as the mayor, but I, the ability or the authority to appoint board members is to point. You appoint us to our various organizations that we are a part of. You know, like the North Border and the other. Yeah, and the Pinton, those same things. But this is not the same because this organization is going to have, it's going to be a five-on-one C-three, totally separate from the county, totally separate from the city, TDC. So I just think that, you know, we're going to do ourselves a great injustice if we don't have one of our elected officials sitting on that board. That's my opinion.
The only thing I say is, if the county has a commissioner there, would he, is he sustaining and voting because he's a commissioner? And then the ones that's not commissioner, whatever, elected officials, they either wants to vote or.
Could that potentially be a conflict of interest for?
That's where I was coming.
And I was directing that to Mr. Walker. I'm trying to cut you off.
Yeah.
But, you know, when we go to say, hey, okay, they're a sitting board member for the sports organization, and we're voting on monies up here to give them, is there any conflict with that?
I have to look at it a little more closely. I think, of course, you're putting in money, one hundred and fifty thousand, county's putting in money. The idea is that it will be self-sufficient, I think in years, I think is what I read. In two years?
Yeah, the anticipation is two years. So, and even after that, and not to cut you off, sir, but even after that two-year mark, where would we be in a position to say that it's their self-sustaining? Then we wouldn't be in a position to be involved. And that's kind of what's part of the thought process.
Then we're just not going to vote.
Hopefully in two years that, you know, we're not putting anything to it. But it kind of, part of it's kind of like, hey, I'm giving you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I need to have a vote on what, what I say is going to be.
No, we got to go on what is done, not what I say, what we say.
Well. Sure you were. Well, Mr. Walker.
I have to look at it a little more closely and give you an opinion about.
Mr. Mullins?
Yeah, so this is a, it's on the same lines, right? But not necessarily related completely with what Commissioner Morton said or what she's necessarily said. But I advised the county yesterday that they need to look at not entangling both boards in so close to this board. And Commissioner Reddick, of course, being on the board, that's the county, that's who they chose. But again, I would just hesitate, I would just caution about entangling themselves with elected officials or higher management. And hinging themselves too close to with a five-on-one C-three like that. Just be cautious, is all I'm saying. Because with that becomes sunshine, you know, maybe that goes in sunshine with that. So just be cautious about that as a law.
In the past, when we had other organizations, we kind of steered away of having elected officials from the city or county involved with that board, even though their kids could participate with it. But we did that because we have to vote. They say they don't, they say they don't follow what we want to do as far as the contract. We have to be able to vote up here to do away with it or have them do an adjustment. So, and that would be the same thing in the county. So you got to look at, do you want to have control or do you want to be able to make changes? You can't have both because this is abstaining from both. And if you're under a command or something like that.
Mr. Milner, do you have any?
Well, I certainly understand and appreciate Mr. Morton's concern, and I think it's valid. Having said that, the analogy, and it may not be a good one, we have the Northeast Florida Economic Development Council that is one of the entities that we give money to, or at least have and may going forward dependent upon our subsequent passage of the memorandum that we give, or resolution we give to the city. And one of their bio requirements, as we know, is there are no elected officials on that one. So, but the second thing I'd say is that I think it does make a little bit of a difference that, and we're not giving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the sports council. What we're doing is we're spending the money that we were already spending to keep all of our fields up, and we're doing that on a reimbursement, as I understand it. Drew, correct me if I'm wrong. But we're not just writing a check to the sports council.
Well, and this, and one of the other problem with this is, yes, we will, but we're invoicing them back.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to, again, tangle ourselves too much and effectively be operating at an extension of the county or us. Then it would true, it would not be a true five-on-one C-three operating on them.
Yeah. But the point is, we will be spending our monies for our stuff that we're already spending for.
It's, yeah, it's just my county.
Yeah. So with that, and again, all due respect to Genesis concerns, which I understand, I'm not particularly in favor of having an elected official on there. We cannot mandate to the county. I don't think there's anything wrong with us very facilitatively saying to the county that we think that there shouldn't be any elected official on there. Should be an independent two-five-on-one C-three represented by extraordinary people, at least from what I've seen on there. I hadn't attended any meetings, but the folks that are on there, I think, are excellent representatives. Don't know that I would have appointed anybody different if I had the chance. So I think we stay the course with allowing the ones that are there that are appointed. And we do that with grace and say to the county, we think the first chance you get. And again, as I think Drew said, and perhaps you did, Mayor, Mr. Reddick had an awful lot to do with getting this thing up off the ground. I want to give him a lot of credit for that, and I mean that. But it may be time for him to look at it and say, okay, he can now back out and appropriate any staff member or somebody that they appoint be on there rather than himself. And I think I would rather see that than either one of us have a representative.
I would feel better and more at ease if that were, that conversation was had. Would we direct Drew to have that conversation?
I don't mind having that conversation.
Yeah, I think.
And I just want to follow up, and because of that, and you brought up a good point. And hindsight, and we learn from what we do, and nobody's done anything wrong. But I would have had this discussion with all of you before I made that decision. Like I said, nobody did anything wrong, but we gained wisdom and knowledge from each other. And we, this is where we do business and learn from each other, so.
Okay.
I'll have that discussion as well, I'm sure, Mr. Mullins. And then we're doing our part, and we move forward from that.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
So with that, do we need to vote on the resolution?
Yeah, okay.
There we go. Who are you?
Twenty-six oh-nine.
Is the resolution of the city of South for approving that certain memorandum of understanding between the city of South and Bradford County, Florida, for creation and support of Bradford Sports United, Inc., making certain findings of fact in support of the city, approving certain memorandum of understanding, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to the said memorandum of understanding, recognizing the authority of the vice mayor to execute and bind the city to said memorandum of understanding in the absence of the mayor, directing the mayor or vice mayor as appropriate to execute and bind the city to said memorandum of understanding. Repeating all prior resolutions in conflict with the right of effective debate, the motion is to pass Resolution twenty-six dash zero-nine upon its reading by title.
Okay, you heard the reading of the resolution. Now entertain a motion to pass.
I would make motion to approve Resolution number twenty-six dash oh-nine as read by title among the by the council.
We have a motion by Commissioner Milner. Do we have a second?
I make a motion.
No.
I mean, I'll second it, but we'll note that I appreciate Morton's concerns. It was really, really smart.
So we had a motion, a second. As we open up for discussion, does anybody have comments? I have a question. So the organization is not an official entity yet. So then is this legitimate?
This is an agreement from the city and county.
But it's regarding.
Regarding funding, no, yeah.
An ink, that's not in ink yet.
Correct.
Yeah.
No, that portion, I know it seems like a rubber and paper before the horse. However, again, this goes to a agreement just before now. And once it's founded, then that's when we can actually fund it.
Okay. To that, hold word in your opinion, Mr. Walker?
He nodded.
Not it? I think I heard a whisper. Not enthusiastically.
For the record, Mr. Walker. Do we have some issues? Okay, any further discussion?
I just have, I just have a question. So I'll ask Kathy this question. You were, you attended the last, the first meeting, Kathy?
I did.
How many members are on that board right now?
Seven.
Seven? Okay, that's all.
All right. Any further?
No, sir.
Any public comment? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for a. All right. Now for number nine, the city clerk report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I would just remind everybody that next Tuesday is Veterans Day. We will have a ceremony at Veterans Park in conjunction with Downtown Motors in the Chamber. And we would love for everybody to be here. It will be at eleven o'clock with American Legion also. Another reminder that there is a pickleball tournament and fundraiser for Rotary on November fifteenth. My understanding is a lot of entities are playing each other for fundraisers. So that probably means the county and the city are playing each other. So, so I do need you to have to be there.
We have to have them.
That is, no, everything is provided. November fifteenth at eight o'clock at the New Facile and at the pickleball. Eight AM. We will also be there with Kiwanis selling the ribs, and they will get rid of the rest of the ribs that they need. The fire and sheriffs are playing together, both education teams are playing each other. So it should be a great time. Everybody be there.
I'm afraid my foot would look like Jane from that play.
Just another reminder that November nineteenth, you guys all have a flyer. We are going to have a Thanksgiving dinner for staff from eleven to one in the fellowship hall just in case of weather for next week for a Thanksgiving meal. And then you also have in your packets some fundraisers that are going on that fellow asks for.
Just thank you. Thank you.
And along with the audit, I just would like to say that in the short time that I've been here, I will tell you that all of my men's department is top-notch. James has worked himself endlessly. And so the audit that looks as good as it does now is due to him. So he definitely needs to be known as a credit.
Mr. Mayor, may I correct the time on the Wednesday? It's at ten-thirty.
Ten-thirty, okay.
On the eleventh at ten-thirty. On the eleventh at ten-thirty.
Thank you. They generally do go eleven-eleven.
Eleven-eleven.
Thanks for the show.
Is our reef still in good state?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
At least I have on my, on my permission, I could say golf cart.
No, sir, I do not think we could pull that out, so, and.
Going off of my count.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullins?
This is not related to that. In the board pack, there are actually ten applications for the program review. One of them did not look necessarily like that.
No. No.
Just want to put that to your attention, do we vote on that, or keep the nine?
We stated as nine. I believe we did.
Did we say it was nine or nine?
We did nine.
But there is actually ten.
Can we just do a vote for correction?
Can we, yeah.
Mr. Walker?
Did you, if you look at the minutes, is it, is it all applicants, was the motion all?
We did say all applicants, but we also, I think we said all with nine, so could we amend that to be all with ten?
I think the maker of the motion can amend his motion.
With all nine, so, so we do need it to say all ten, and that would have been, okay.
Danny, did you make that move?
I think I did.
He did, he did.
Mr. Mullins, you were like the second-
Let's call that the second first.
What district is that last one, Drew? I don't see it.
Sir, should be five, aye.
You're talking about Williamson? Five?
Jennifer Willard.
You got Jennifer Willard, are you, that's Chris?
I got, I do, I think it was just the way that it was printed, it does not have a city seal on it. What about Williamson, that's the one that was the last one in my book.
It's the one right before.
What, what district of Williamson, five?
Williamson is five.
And Jennifer is four, and first four, okay.
So, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, may I ask the attorney?
Yes, sir.
So, the proper motion, Mr. Attorney, is for the original maker of the motion to amend his motion to-
Well, I'll have to do the second, I'll give you the second first, okay? All right, so you ought to make a motion to approve all ten applicants.
And was I the second?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was second to the motion.
Okay, in regards to five a for the charter review committee, we have made amendments to the motion to accept all ten applicants. We have a new motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four o, second time.
I'll call it up then.
That's okay.
All right, public hearing, Mr. Walker.
Ordnance Number twenty-two six dash zero one, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Stark, Florida, revising Chapter one hundred and two, Article four, Division three, Section one oh two dash one eighty-seven, schedule of security-like rates, amending the security-like rates for residential and commercial customers, providing direction for codification of this ordinance, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing effective date for the motion is to pass ordinance number twenty-two six dash zero one upon its reading by Title One.
And this is the second reading. This time I will entertain a motion to pass ordinance number twenty-two six dash zero one.
I will amend, I will make a motion.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner- Second by Commissioner Walker. Is there any further discussion?
I noticed Drew waited until a month before I was wishing I had a light, and I was getting a little bit annoyed, it's okay.
Actually, it'll be double for you.
It will be now.
All right, we're not hearing any further discussion, do we have any public comment? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four o. Ten b.
Ordinance number twenty-two six dash zero two, an ordinance of the City of Stark, Florida, amending Chapter seventy-eight personnel, Article four, city employee retirement systems, Division four, general employees retirement system, Section seventy-eight dash two thirty-three, membership and system, providing for compensation, providing for conflict, providing for repealer, providing for severability, and providing effective date, appropriate motion is to pass ordinance number twenty-two six dash zero two upon its reading by Title One.
Okay, you've heard the reading of the ordinance, this is the first reading, ordinance number twenty-two six dash zero two, I will entertain a motion to pass.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance twenty-six dash zero two be approved on first reading as read by Title One.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mortimer, do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Nugent, any further discussion?
Could, what exactly is being amended in this, I know I read every, but I just wanted to say it for the record, so you know.
Yes. So I'll cut the four fifty-seven out of the general pension board.
I'll, if I may, during the general employee pension board meetings for the last, Mr. Nugent, correct me if I'm wrong, last several meetings.
Yes.
We were instructed by our attorney, Mr. Ron Cohen, that we really needed to update this ordinance, because initially we were, it included two, it included the other position that we did away with, and he advised the board that the tax folks that he, tax attorneys that he contacted to discuss the legalities of this would not, did not withstand the legal test with the two positions, but changing it to one, the city managers, because of the longevity of generally those positions, that this was the best route to go. So the pension board did approve it five o to bring it to this board.
Wonderful, thank you for that explanation. All right, any further discussion? Any public comment? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four o. Number eleven, we have no quasi judicial hearings listed, city attorney report, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Mayor, we have changed our ethics presentation, and it is now December eighteen. Four p.m., there was a league of city meetings that everybody was going to, and so we said we're going to shift and do it to December eighteen.
So, actually, I think during the, the city thing on that day, or the latest, actually?
No, it's another league of cities.
Oh, it's a local league of cities. Well, you can't be everywhere at once, so.
Everybody has their own.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be there. I'll miss League of Cities, so I can stay up to-
So you can be F O.
Yeah, so I don't have to do the, the video presentation that you guys are doing.
I'm gonna do it till I have it.
All right. Anything else? Okay. All right, law enforcement report, Sheriff.
I got it.
I got it.
Well, it's always a pleasure to come before you, but also I wanted to bring up the Holiday with Heroes, went on a shop with a cop this year, give you some dates. Brad Witt, as y'all know, emergency management director, Captain Witt, organizes all this now, and has done a phenomenal job in fundraising so far, but it's in our season, we're gonna pick up some more. But the Holiday with Heroes event continued conditions of the past, this event ensures local children receive a Merry Christmas by trading them to a shopping spree with law enforcement corrections, fire rescue, emergency communications, military, healthcare professionals, and if y'all would like, come out and grab us a child, or two, or three. And, but it says, so save the dates, Tuesday, December sixteenth, and Thursday, December eighteenth, that's before they take their Christmas break, so kids can get their, the school does a phenomenal job of making sure the buses and tagging, and he's helping assistants, and that usually kicks off usually nine o'clock in the morning, they feed them a treat, and give them a cookie and stuff, we're actually getting the cooking team together, they're gonna do some stuff afterwards together, we're gonna get a location for that. Last year we did two hundred and thirty-six students, we're looking to increase those numbers and need at least a hundred and fifty heroes per day, so it's quite an event, I gotta give kudos to Brad, he's really organized it. Accountability is number one, with every dime that's raised, every dime gets spent back on the child. And we was able to increase it last year from a hundred dollars, I think it might have been like a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-six, because what a hundred dollars bought twenty years ago when this program started does not buy us anything today. And we use the Art Sherable Foundation as the tax exempt, along those lines, do that accountability.
What were the hours again, on sixteen?
Uh-
He keeps it at nine.
Nine starts at nine, yes, ma'am.
On both days?
Both days, yes, ma'am. That's, we've got to have a hundred and fifty per day.
What time do you want staff, somebody in the volunteers there?
Well, let's get there about eight thirty, we'll get us a cup of coffee, we'll all sit around.
Do we need to let anybody in your office know, or we just show up?
Just show up, we're gonna, we're gonna have, DOC really does a good job, they do a big fundraiser, and plus they turn out well. Forestry, game and fish, FHP, we really get a good turnout, and we need those. First day is usually really overwhelming, second day you're, you're kind of picking up sometimes in regards, we want to get a few more kids this year, we've, we've got the money already raised, and we're just getting into the main kickoff of the season for fundraising. We've exceeded, I guess now our nonprofit has to do that stuff, so it's, it's done really well. So checks can be made to Bradford County Sheriff's Office, or can, wait a minute, checks can be delivered to the Bradford County Sheriff's Office during normal business hours, and the deadline for donations is Friday, November twenty-eighth at five p.m. It says participating organizations, if your organization is participating in this event, please designate a point of contact or return the number of participants to me, I'm gonna send y'all this email, they can go forward to y'all, because it's got a lot of details in it, I don't worry with that, but it's, it's here, it's just one of the times to give back to the kids in our community, and kudos to the teachers that really go through and pick the kids that really, they know who needs it, who doesn't, and then whatever we have left, we, we do provide hams, turkeys, that kind of stuff, to me, families. Mormons has always given us trees for people that didn't have a tree, it's been a lot of good over the years, so we're there for that, and continue that great, great thing.
Sheriff, I've participated in the first time when y'all did it, when I was-
You were young, man.
How many, I still had hair, and it wasn't great, how many were there, I can't remember.
The first year we did right at thirty.
Yeah, it wasn't many.
It was thirty, we got a grant, we get Walmart, talking to them, they were building a new Walmart and stuff, and say, hey, about this idea, we really didn't know what to do, and I was police chief back then, and Captain Warren at the time stepped up, and we used him, and people would, you know, being there would give us twenty-five dollars here, twenty there, really didn't have a way to account for it, but it's, it's just grown over the years. Captain Warren did a good job, Major Warren moved through the ranks, you know, got there, and then we took up, we didn't want to lose that. And Brad Witt just took a, a great program and turned it into even a more phenomenal aspect, you know, and we got a local organization that donated shirts to us, so we give something for those that come out, and this year we want to do some food afterwards. It gives a good time for our law enforcement, firemen, corrections people to kind of reminisce and hang out, and camaraderie, the elements, I should say, is the proper worm, uh, word, or the proper word, so we can kind of hang out a little bit and feed people some good food, so we're gonna do that as well, do some sausage and hot dogs, and hamburgers, and whatever else we can drum up with the cook team, so we're gonna get a lot of donations for that.
Yeah, I just got one question, I was asked by a parent that has two kids in the daycare center there in front on Washington Street.
Yes, ma'am.
Do, do they get to, to send their names, or is it just within the system?
It's in with the school district, now, now here's what we do do, and it's been kind of kept under wraps for a long time, we have other private citizens, private companies, that do donate, do not want to be named, and we have a, we find a need like that, we do try to reach out and assist them, whether it be food, and we gotta be careful with food, because people don't realize, some people live in hotel rooms, some people are living in places, I remember having to go buy one of those, what do you call them, little one burner things, I remember going, I couldn't find it, I found it at a hardware, it's just a single burner that, that plugged in, because some people don't have way, when you buy all that stuff and deliver it, they don't have ways to bake and prepare, so we've, you know, get certain things already cooked and prepared, and it's sad, but y'all, that's in our community. Got to step up, and I know Bob, he, he was at a food pantry, and, you know, it's, it's, you see it this time of year when people really need that help, and it's, it's, we've got one of the best-giving communities bar none anywhere. I've seen it firsthand, year in, year out, food pantries, not just that are, are one there, but other churches, and we've, we've got a great giving community.
So, so the, to get the names of the daycare kids, can, can I just submit those?
You just reach out to them, we'll make sure it gets to the proper.
Okay, okay.
Make sure it gets where, where it goes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, number is real call for October, I want to give you a list, you got to do, you can read, says calls for service is the two thousand seven hundred, if, if you look at that, I always look at the citizen's vehicle unlocks, and those are getting less and less, I guess, with people and technology, a lot of cars now with your phone, you can lock it and unlock it, start it, you see some of that growing, but it, it'll get busy in November and December with shopping and the chaos that goes on, but that is a service of five to six hundred vehicles a year, and that's just the ones documented, because a lot of times it's the sheriff people call me, and I just send somebody, or I've got a, a lock kit, and some of the supervisors, they just go unlock them, and it doesn't really get a call, but, but those are one of the things, DUI, and I want you to notice, sometimes people, I, I got asked before, it says like on the front, sex offenses four, and then you look back over, and you'll see sex offense three, well, we got it reported as that, but when you get to looking into it, it may not be a sex offense, or shoplifting says eight, and you get over on the back of what is, the back sheet is what we have, actual written documented reports, not just a computer automated dispatch call. Every time you call into that center, everything is documented with a call number, what we call CAD. That CAD number only turns into an incident report, and they get assigned a case number when it's, it's something that's had to be written, documented of an actual case or crime, or could possibly become a case or crime. So, when you see the difference in numbers, I've had, well, these numbers are different, what you see on the front is what they're actually getting dispatched to, and, and of course, you know, checking buildings, stolen vehicle three, and then you get back around here and you got stolen vehicle one, well, you got three because they woke up and their car was gone, but it was repo. Just, that's just an example, or their son or daughter, or ex-husband, ex-boyfriend, or somebody took off with it. So we, we get a lot of that, and it turns into civil, so those are just some of the things what you see. We're looking at the, I think we do our end of the year report, you're gonna find out, response times, crime rates have all gone down, and a lot of that's just due to the hard work of the, the gals and guys out there that are, the way they rotate the system, and the way we got it set up, Captain Warren's really done a good job, if somebody else leave one area to go, somebody else is backfilling, kind of what you've seen the fire unit services do for many, many years, we got that backfilling. On occasion, there is that one call when it's all hands all day, but that was regardless whether it was city or county difference, there are just some incidents that bad, whether it be in the city or outside, but for the whole, it really works well for ninety-nine percent of the time. I want to say thank you, I think it saved the city millions, just looking back at the numbers, so. Any, any questions?
The, the traffic stops, they're not all citations, they're just-
No, ma'am, actually, we give more warnings than we do citations, as we move into the holiday season, I'll be honest with you, we try to go into a more educational way, it's hard enough on people in distress, we try to, some people don't let you, we're gonna be honest with you, some people talk herself right into it, yeah, we, and we try to give personality tickets, but we try to be a little more generous, and when you, you know, when they're given ten to fifteen mile an hour over speed before they decide to chase you, write you a traffic citation, it's something, something to be said, that they know they're speeding. And a lot of it in the city is aggressive. Side streets, everybody does it, I've been guilty of it, but the aggressive driving is really, everybody's in a hurry, you know, so, but yes, there's a lot of warnings go involved in that, and the holiday season's here, if you're going to drink and drive, please call someone. I wish we had an Uber or a Lyft or something in town, somebody retired or something that might want to, you know, pick up and say, I'll drive and pick you up, I think it would say, yeah, I mean, somebody retired, please could pick up. I drove, I drove with Danny before, I'm not sure. I think I passed both, but, but that, that is just some things to think of, and as we move into holiday season, I want to thank y'all, the recognition, I want to give kudos, because that's really important to us, and the job we do, because we got to keep our young kids occupied or they find something else, and I think if we organize the right way, and solve a lot of our complaints, thank you.
I want to ask a mayor of Brad Street, it's a continual complaint.
From speeding?
Yeah, just the traffic stop signs, it's bad.
I never forget the stop signs that aren't legally DOT required set up, but-
It's more of a suggestion.
Yeah.
And it's treated that way.
But, but Pratt Street, people do cut through, they cut from one hundred over back toward the schools to Orange Street, that is a constant problem, but I'll be honest with you, most people we stop are local.
Oh, yeah, no doubt about it.
It's the people that live there, yeah, so.
And, and they'll be complaining one time.
And the next time they're begging for forgiveness, that's the way it works.
They're complaining on their neighbor who lives there.
Yeah, you got it.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. All right, Mr. Reports. Mr. Mortimer.
Um, just a reminder, I will be on vacation, starting, I know, December twentieth, wonderful vacation.
So you won't be here the next meeting, but you're gonna-
I will be here the next meeting, I, I will be here on the second, although in this, I will just be there.
All right, Mr. Nugent?
Okay, I was gonna tell you, there's no League of Cities. Okay, um, I just wanna tell you, there's another League of Cities meeting in November, Thanksgiving. Uh, December meeting will be the Christmas dinner, gala, whatever you wanna call it. I'd be, um, twelve eighteen, it'd be in Lake City, they're hosting it this year, they're like Butler, they rotate. And then, League of Cities are big, I'd get together, the whole league would be in fourth and fifth, down Orlando, I think several of us are going to it. That's it for me.
Mr. Miller?
Real quick, I think I got five things, so I'll make a, uh, remind everybody, the V H F tornadoes will be hosting their first game playoff. Yeah, Friday week, the fourteenth. We'll know hopefully late Thursday afternoon, as the sheriff and I were talking about earlier, who will be playing, doesn't matter, get everybody out, support, support the team. Second of all, um, shameless plug, since Madam Clerk brought up the organizations there, our Kiwanis Club is doing our annual fundraiser at our Riff Fest.
Shameless, shameless.
I happen to have the tickets for the media, twenty-five dollars for the big slabs. And all of that money stays in for every county, every penny of it. It does not go out to Kiwanis International, that's our dues and things like that. So, uh, anyway, Lisa settled them too, so. Uh, second of all... Uh, then third of all, excuse me, Sheriff mentioned Food Pantry, thank the sheriff. We are really being hit right now, as you can imagine, uh, with more and more clients, and we do not know the outcome yet of the course of stale maiden congress and subsequently, uh, how much of the staff and WIC are gonna be continued or cut or diminished or whatever. And nearly all of our clients received one or both of those. Uh, and remember now, WIC is for women and children, literally in crisis, living below the poverty level. Now, we have, we beat into Food Pantry. We've had several excellent donations this month in honor of those that have passed away or something, and several organizations like Altrusa and others that have brought down food, but we can, we can use the food or the, the money. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask the commissioners, Ms. Mortimer mentioned, you know, she'll be on vacation, and you've gotta miss the first meeting, and, uh, Ms. Temple, hopefully we'll be back for our next meeting in December, I mean, in, uh, November. I, I was wondering if, uh, Madam Clerk and, uh, the city manager and James could agree, would y'all be willing to consider one meeting in December and maybe make that the, the second week, uh, well before Christmas? But as long, as long as James and, and, uh, Ms. Chrissy and Drew could say the bills will get paid and we can do everything. If it's too, too much stress on y'all, then no, but I'm just asking my fellow commissioners if we can knock it down to one meeting in December. Can I ask Drew, do you know anything that wouldn't prohibit it?
No, we can keep it on the sixteenth.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, just leave that one where it is.
December fifteenth is a slower month.
I, I hate to have our next meeting without a good mayor back yet.
Well, we have a very capable vice mayor.
You are correct, and let me be very clear in agreement. Very clear in agreeing with you on that. Okay.
So, sixteen.
Sixteenth.
Yeah, so we can, we can vote on that later from you to me, but it's my time, but that's what I was gonna say. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the last thing is, uh, if I'm not mistaken, uh, from the time, when I got on here in October of last year, and, and the board had just changed the clerk and all to the chief administrative officer, and there was a performance evaluation. But I have not participated in an evaluation of our city manager in the year plus that I have been on here. And I'm, you correct me if I'm wrong.
Just, just the one in January. But you, I mean, you don't wanna be on here since...
But no action was taken, or were you given a pay raise as a result of that, or anything?
No, no. We've done another reconsideration at the end.
So, so do we have a discussion, or we're gonna do it again in January? I'm, I'm just making sure.
The, the original intent back, back then was, um, another one in October of this year. But I mean, you know, the, technically, technically, my contract is supposed to be every April. However, last year was the first time in three years, or this year is the first time in three and a half years that commissioners actually done one, so, yeah.
Well, we need to get on the right track.
Thank you, that's all I'm saying, that the, the size of...
Do we do it now, or do we establish starting January one, or do we do April? I don't think we need to go to April.
Right. You're running out of personal preference now.
I'm not going to necessarily on your personal preference, but I'm here to listen to the board too, and if we get their wisdom and knowledge on things, so.
I think if we followed what we did with the C A O, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, y'all are over here, but if Mr. Walker and his firm has those standard, I'm gonna call it industrialized questions, except for some that may be specific to the city of Stark, and had, could get those out to us all, even though you've gotta miss a meeting, and Ms. Mortimer still give us ample time, then that first and only meeting in December, I think we could discuss it and hopefully even vote, if we've already got our stuff into the, uh, our comments and, and all to Mr. Walker prior to the, the sixteenth, we could vote in December.
December's good, as long as we can get it before.
Yeah, some things we also gotta think about. We haven't put anything up yet. You know, and I say we don't have good people, though. We need to be looking at some of the stuff. You know, our contracts, we need to put them out for bed again, you know, we did that, and then I say we never hired the same person back, but we haven't done that in a while, you know. Well, we used to do that. We used to put, do, um, our contracts, like lawyers, no fence, and, and, uh, waste management, like we used to put, bring in, we talked to them, and that's how we negotiated prices and stuff like that. So, uh, we haven't done that in a while.
Ms. Thompson, you had a comment?
I do. Uh, Commissioner Nugent, we, when I came on board, I looked, um, with the city manager and James, and he has a spreadsheet, and we are in contract with everything that we need to, so we will bring it up to you when it's, I think the earliest would be an engineer, and it's just an evaluation, so right now I'm thinking it's in contract.
Oh, so your calendar, you got that on your calendar, so it'll come up when it's true.
Yes.
When it's true.
Okay.
All right, Sheriff, anything else?
Uh, kudos to, uh, Mr. David Sparks and Drew and the crew. We had a huge water leak, as y'all would say. They have seen or heard my fall, uh, starting Friday. And so I went down yesterday, staying out of their way, uh, but watched them work and watched Danny's crew put on two vans on a twelve-inch main. Uh, there was a lot of water. I don't know what the gallons per minute coming through there, Mr. David. And, uh, they did a, the employees were twelve feet down in the hole. Seriously, in water like this, and meanwhile, we've got the back truck, of course, is sucking out the water and the mud, otherwise, if the employee gets in the way, there goes his boot. I, I just, I told Drew yesterday, I said, we've got to have some, some photos and stuff so citizens can see on Facebook and everyone. And I'm not saying that their staff not already working on that. We need to, we collectively need to do a better job, I believe, of pointing out how good of a job the city staff does, particularly during emergencies, but even during, during routine maintenance of, of issues of gas, water, and so forth. So, kudos to our management, and particularly to those folks that was out there with the shovels.
And I will say, on that particular leak, Friday night when we were out there, it was like twelve o'clock Friday night, right? Usually with the water leak itself, especially it being that, supposed to be that close, usually you have a good chlorine residual on there. There was none, and it just, there was a little spring going at the, I mean, it looked like a little spring had popped out or something, so. Found it yesterday, and it seems good to go now.
Yeah. All right, good. Okay, so just to reiterate now, when you're about stuff, um, Mr. Walker, Danny and yourself could get that out to us, and we will... We, are we gonna set a date and have it turned in prior, so we can have it for the sixteenth? So, if you guys can establish a reasonable timeframe there for us to have that back to.
How soon can you, I'm sorry, how soon can you get them to us?
It was pretty standardized, so it might work.
She just said, yes, I'll have it out.
All right, so we'll get that out, we'll establish the timeframe to have it back, and then we will set, we'll take care of that December sixteenth. Anything else? All right, Mr. Ford, turn.